Good afternoon. The date today is Thursday, November 5th, 2020. The time is 1:30 PM. It's another beautiful day here in paradise, so I'm happy to call to order the regularly scheduled November meeting of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to start off with the Madam Secretary calling the roll.
Christopher Hagan.
Here.
Malika Barlow.
President.
Christopher Cammerer.
Here.
Michael Hyman.
Here.
Michael Wood.
Here.
Alfred Fields.
President.
Hey, great. It appears that we have a quorum. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic of Georgia.
One nation, under God, indivisible, truly and just as for all. Okay. Moving on, we'd like to, in our board packets, were the meeting minutes from the May 7th, 2020 meeting. I hope everybody's had a chance to review those, and if so, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll present a motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Barlow and seconded, I believe that was Mr. Cammerer.
Correct.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. We'll move on to a report from our zoning staff. John?
Good afternoon, everyone. First, I hope you're all doing well and staying healthy. Again, I want to thank you for your patience as we, and understanding as we continue to move forward with our board meetings virtually, while City Commission has transitioned to in-person meetings with, you know, protocols in place for everyone to stay safe. The mayor has directed us to move forward with board meetings such as ZBA Planning Board and so forth in a virtual format, and we'll continue to do that until further notice. So again, thank you for your cooperation in getting on the meeting early, working through the technical aspects and so forth. If you ever have any issues, don't hesitate to reach out to me directly in advance. I would like to indicate that in the upcoming year, I'm hoping to work with you, the members of the ZBA, on updating the bylaws. It's been quite a long time since those have been looked at and amended. This is in addition to us staff moving forward with some cleanup of the administrative portion of our zoning regulations. So this will allow us to provide some consistency between that and your bylaws. So I would certainly encourage you to start looking at those bylaws and maybe identifying things that you think should be looked at, but I ask that you stay tuned for more details on that. In addition, I think I'll work with the board attorney with regards to, the city is looking to do refresher with regards to orientation, ethics aspects and so forth. Those are trainings that you likely received when you came onto the board, but we're looking to implement, you know, every couple of years a refresher, so we'll kind of put those details in place and be back with you in regards to that. I will point out, on the end of your agenda, you'll see that it's time to nominate and vote on your officers for the upcoming year, which that actually leads me into my announcement and presentation that I want to make. Mr. Carmen is here as a citizen. In September, the city receives Mr. Carmen's notice that he'd be resigning from the ZBA effective immediately. So he's joining us as a private citizen this afternoon. But while he has resigned, or excuse me, in exchange for that, Mr. Wood will move up to a full-time voting position, and then Mr. Fields will be our first alternate, and we're looking to fill that vacancy in Mr. Carmen's resignation. And while he has resigned, I couldn't let him go just yet. I had to make him attend one more meeting. So I've asked him to join us this afternoon, again as a citizen, to present to him on behalf of the city.
And John, how do you go on? Back quick, Mr. Carmen, we see Sam's note. He said something, he can't hear us or something?
Uh.
Sam, can't hear audio.
We could hear him, but he just put himself on mute.
Sam.
Just take yourself off mute.
Looks like he's muted.
Okay, it looks like it's unmuted. Can you say something so we can hear you?
Can you hear us, Sam?
Is the volume on your?
Computer turned up.
Computer turned up?
Who are you, Sam?
There you go, we can hear you now.
They just put themselves on mute again.
Go ahead, Mr. That's fine.
But again, Sam should be able to hear us now if they turn up the volume of their speaker on their desktop or laptop.
Sam and Zoe, can you hear us?
He's unmuted now.
Can you hear us?
Yeah.
We can hear you. Don't touch anything. We can hear you.
I don't think that's the issue, Hope. I think the issue is they can't hear us.
Okay.
I got a visitor. Have you want to say something?
No, I'm just watching on my office.
Oh.
Hold on, I'm trying to solve through chat.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your ID, followed by town. Entering your participant ID, followed by town. Otherwise, just press.
Oh, they're gonna.
You have entered the meeting as a panelist.
James, they just don't want to see you go. You need to stay on as chairman. That's why this is all going on.
That's quite all right.
It's just a stall tactic.
Can we put up a screensaver?
Sam, can you hear us now?
No, I can't. Thank you.
All right. So I'll continue on. Sam, do you want me to start all over again? No.
Well, last thing, Rick. I'm sorry, John. Rick said he can't, he can't talk. Could you send him back and say he's, he can't talk? Like he's on as a participant, not a panelist.
I don't even see him logged in at all.
Yeah, he just, that's what he walked in my office to tell me.
Okay. I don't see where he's logged on at all. Um, so Mr. Carmen, thank you for joining us. As I indicated, Mr. Carmen submitted his resignation last month, so on behalf of the city, I wanted to present a certificate of appropriate appreciation. Mr. Carmen has served for more than seventeen years volunteering for the ZBA. He's been member, chairperson and so forth. He was appointed in September 2003, which is actually a month after I started working here, so it's been great, you know, having my entire career with you on the ZBA. He's always brought a sense of calm, but leadership to the board, which we've always appreciated. So again, personally and on behalf of the city, I want to thank you for the time that you've given to the service of the ZBA and the city as a whole, and I hope you've made your tea time for 1:30 on the first Thursday of every month, as you now have that time available. So we really want to thank you for all those years of service and volunteerism towards the city and say appreciate your leadership on the board. So thank you, and if you will let me in the gate, I would be happy to, an honor to deliver the certificate in person, so.
Not a problem.
Thank you again.
It's been fun. It's been interesting. I've met a lot of nice people, had a lot of interesting meetings. I see we, and we've also developed a lot of plans. We've changed people's plans and drawings and ideas, but I still don't know how that was part of the ZBA, but that's one of those things. It's been fun. It's been fun, but it's time to move, let somebody else sit in the chair for a while.
Thank you for your service.
At the end of this meeting, we'll figure out who the new chair will be, but Chris, if you can run the meeting today, that would be greatly appreciated. And I don't know if anybody has anything they want to say before we move on, but.
Yeah. Yes, we just add a heartfelt thank you and for all the years that you've guided and participated in this board.
You're here.
So thank you, Mr. Carmen, and we hope you enjoy your afternoon and.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Before this tropical storm comes our way, so.
No, we're not worried about that. That's passing fancy. Have fun and enjoy.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. All right, Chris, I think that's all I have for my comments, so if you want to continue with ex parte communication.
Sure. Well, I'll just start off with remarks by the chairperson. I just pursuant to Executive Order Number 20-69 that was issued by the Office of Governor Ron DeSantis on March 20th, 2020. Mayor Keith James's Executive Order Number 2020-05 issued on April 2nd, 2020. And the City of West Palm Beach's boards and committees are now conducting meetings through media technology and have released the requirements to have a quorum of its members physically present at City Hall. On April 14th, 2020, Mayor Keith James issued Executive Order Number 2020-09, which specifically provides the rules of the procedure for conducting city meetings, including requirements for quasi judicial hearings. So today's hearing is being conducted in accordance with these executive orders. The way that the, as we hear the cases, the way that they'll be, that we'll go through the procedure is that applicants will present their case, then staff will be able to make their presentation. The public will have an opportunity to speak or have any comments read into the record, and then the board will go into executive session. So prior to rendering that decision, the board will confirm that we have no additional public comments that have been received by the staff members. The only other comment that I'd like to make is that, you know, for all staff, board members, members of the public present, I hope that everyone has been, has been doing all right through COVID and during these uncertain and unusual times, and certainly my thoughts and prayers are with everyone's health and safety during this time. With that, I'd like to just move into, see if there's any ex parte communication on any of the items on today's, on the item that's on today's agenda. I'll just start off, I'll call each member so they can make any ex parte communication. So I'll start off with Board Member Hyman.
I've had no ex parte communications.
Okay. Board Member Barlow?
None.
Okay. Board Member Wood?
No ex parte communications.
Board Member Cammerer?
No ex parte communications.
Okay, first alternate Fields?
No ex parte communications.
Okay, and Christopher Hagan, no ex parte communication. With that, we'll be able to move into the public hearing. So the first order of business under, moving into the public hearing, is that we swear in any witnesses. So I'll turn that over to the board attorney.
Everyone giving testimony, raise your hand. Mr. Schwartz, unmute yourself, please. You solemnly swear a firm that the testimony you're about to give will be truthful.
Yes, I do.
We have no continued cases, so we'll move into the first first new case on our agenda, which is Items Roman numeral six, Item C1. So I'll have Madam Secretary read that case into the record.
Request by Louis J. Schwartz for a variance from the requirements of Section 94-309 of the city's zoning and land development regulations, specifically regarding the required fifteen-foot townhome rear setback for the primary structure in order to install an insulated roof structure over the rear patio. The property is located at 4541 Terracole Way within the Terracole Townhome Development within Commission District Number Four, Commissioner Joseph Paducy.
Okay. Is the applicant present, and if so, would he or she like to make a presentation?
I am. I'm a little bit not familiar with Zoom, but I, I think if I grabbed my screen, I could put on my PowerPoint presentation and, and kind of go through the whole motion. All right, so I'm going to share my screen. Let's see how it goes. Okay. Do you guys see it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. All right, awesome. Good afternoon, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I appreciate your time and effort in this situation. I'd like to be as succinct and brief as possible while informing of all the presentations I have and evidence. With that being said, let's begin. The purpose of the variance is really like the Madam Secretary is really to build beyond the setbacks. According to the current setbacks, I believe the columns and the isolated footers have to be five feet from the property line and five feet in from the neighbor's property line, and with a maximum overhang of three feet. So the ideal would be to have the setbacks arranged, or the variance would be where it would be a setback of two feet from the property line and two feet from the neighbor with an overhang of two feet. That's the idea. That's what I'm trying to go for. That's why I'm requesting a variance. I did, in the email, I think Mrs. Angela Van Jones did supply you with the survey with plans. If you click on here, you'll see it. Here's, here's a survey of my property, and here's what I intend to do with three isolated footers along, along the outside of the, or within the perimeter of my patio, two feet in and by two feet, and then two feet here from this property line. Right here is two feet, and so it would be located to the rear. So that's, that's basically that. The columns, like I said, it would be two feet from the rear property. I'm a little ahead of myself, so. I keep in mind, I've never done this. It's actually quite exciting, so I'm having a blast. I'd like to show you some photos to give you more of a visual. So can you guys see this?
Yes.
Yes. All right, so here's the perimeter of my backyard. This is actually from a Ring video camera view, and then I took a couple of photos with my phone, and I was able to put it all on here. So I'd like to have this. As you can see, this is actually facing the west, and that western exposure with our beautiful paradise that we have, it's beautiful, but there are some inconveniences where that sun penetrates my home and the first floor is really hot, and the air conditioning seems like it's running overtime. It's really, you know, this insulated roof would not only cover the perimeter of my patio, but it would also shield that sun from penetrating into the first floor, which would provide great shade, but also it would be economically feasible because I wouldn't have to spend so much money on VAC. It would actually regulate itself much more conducive with that insulated roof, and all of that would be helpful for my well-being. Now, here's the, here's an idea of the insulated roof. I took a couple of photos of a buddy of mine that had one installed, and that's where I received this idea. This insulated roof here is capable of withstanding 170 mile per hour winds. It's built to last. It's very strong. As you can see, there's some foam in the middle, and there's a thin sheet of sheet metal with paint on there, and that basically would provide shelter from winds, rain, and the sun's rays. It's a beautiful addition. It would enhance the aesthetics of my community immensely, which I believe my community is beautiful as it is, but I think this would elevate the image. That's that. And so, basically, I did, I did write a letter. I'm sure you guys have it. Basically, I'm a retired law enforcement officer with the city of West Palm Beach. I actually became disabled as a law enforcement. I was a motorcycle officer, injured my back on duty. So I had some back issues. I also had blood pressure issues. So the, not only would it look good, this insulated roof, it would also help me, since I'm on a fixed income financially with the air conditioning, but also my, my, my living would be enhanced immensely, being cooler and everything else. So that's part of the reasoning of everything that's going behind this whole variance. Blocking, like I said, blocking the western exposure and then the cost economically, reduce energy costs. Okay, so I did a little research and I went and spoke to the board of, I'm actually the president of the HOA here, and I completed an application, as you can see, for the Terracole Architectural Application. I didn't vote. I didn't have any say in the matter. This is just me presenting it to the board. This is the initial application, basically stating that I'd like to have a twenty-four by fifteen, fifteen-foot insulated roof with the way I had initially planned for the permit, and this is basically the application. Some of the parts, I, some of the parts in this file, I actually showed you. It's just a packet of it, so yeah, there it is, the photos and everything else. With the engineering report as well. So with that, the board came back and they were unanimous in their decision to allow me to build this insulated roof. This is the approval letter for the, for the insulated roof with the setbacks requested, the variant. So as you can see, it's pretty well straightforward. I got the approval from the board. And then I contacted my immediate neighbor to the south. Her name is Emily. She's at 4543 Terracole Way, and she did in fact consent to the proposed build. She also wrote a letter and signed it, and here is the letter confirming and consenting. She not only thinks that it would help with her western exposure will provide shade, but also it would enhance the community's image and look very good outside of her patio. So that's her consent. And where am I at? I think that's it. It's pretty straightforward. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. That's basically my presentation.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Schwartz. Before we move to the staff presentation, I will ask if board members have any questions for the applicant. So probably just easiest if I, you know, just run through each board member by name. So I'll start off with Member Barlow.
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, Member Wood?
No questions.
Member Cammerer?
The only question I have is, you got a letter from the neighbor to the south. Is there a neighbor to the north?
No. The neighbor to the north, no, I actually, it's, it's, I could show you the survey if you'd like. You want me to go back?
An unit.
Yeah, there's no, it's an N unit, sorry.
Okay, that's fine then. Thank you.
Yeah.
Quit talking to the photos.
Okay.
Okay, Board Member Hyman?
No, with the approval of the Architectural Committee as well as the neighbor's consent, I have no questions at all.
Yeah. First alternate Fields, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, I have no questions for the applicant either, so we'll move to the staff presentation.
But I read Angela Van, planning the zoning administrator. Just forced up going over just about everything, but I'll show you the video so we answer your question about and show that there's a corner lot, and let me see if I can do this right. You see my screen? Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm learning, who tell you?
Your presentation looks quite out of the mine.
Just wanted to show you, just to answer your question, location of the, of the property. You can see Terracole is on Military Trail, and it is a corner lot. So he asked basically aside or, and there's nobody to the south, to the north, and a neighbor to the south. And nobody behind him to the west. And just to clarify a little bit, on, on the bearing's request, what he said is, because he's attaching it to the building, staff considers that as part has to meet the setback to the primary structure. So when the developers built Terracole, the code says that you can do fifteen, fifteen feet or 10% of the lot depth for the rear setback. They chose fifteen feet. So in essence, the post, and I guess, are we gonna, the post will be one feet, one foot from the rear setback. So therefore, that's why it's a fourteen-foot bearing's request. So just to clarify it a little bit, so it's from the rear setback of the principal structure. So the total setback request is a fourteen feet. And I'm showing you the video. I'm standing now, looking at the bike patio, looking to the south. I'm panning, this is, the retention leg is actually located to the west of him. That's for military trail drainage. Not even for this, for military trail. For the drainage for that road. And looking at, back to the north, and you can see, they come around. This is his side yard, because he's on the corner. Coming around. I'm telling him to move as he pulling up his weeds when I came out there to film.
Oh, yeah. Looks big.
And again, this is showing the patio today. And he's basically, as you can see, his whole patio is already, with the permit, already been half the paper bricks, half the footer. And I'm looking, and this is the neighbor's rear yard. As you can see, in the south, and it's pan, that most of the neighbors have not done anything in the area. Most of them just have landscaping and trees. Just quickly, this request meets all the bearing standards, and staff recommends approval complies with Section 9438 of the zoning code. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you very much, Angela. I'll move back to the board, just go down the roll to see if if any members have questions for staff. So start off with Board Member Wood. Any questions? Okay. Board Member Cammerer?
No questions. Thank you.
Board Member Hyman?
Thank you. No questions.
Board Member Barlow?
No questions.
Your first alternate Fields?
No questions.
Okay, I have no questions for staff either. So we'll turn over to see if there are any comments from members of the public. Is, I'll open the public hearing. Is it, are there any members of public here to speak on this item?
Mr. West here, we don't have any members here, and we haven't received any communication.
Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing, so we'll move into executive session. If anybody wants to make any comment or discussion, otherwise, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I don't think there are any comments, so I'll put forward a motion if no one has any comments or executive discussion.
Going once, going twice? Okay, well, here a motion. I believe, and I believe there is language in the, in the board packet, if anyone is wishing to make the motion, either granting or denying the variance. So, so we've got language. It's on page thirty-eight of the, of the board packet.
As an alternate, can I make the motion?
You will be a voting member, so unfortunately, you won't, wouldn't be able to on this item, but.
Chris, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant application number 3387, a request by Louis J. Schwartz for a variance from the requirement of Section 94-309G6D3 of the city's zoning and land development regulations to allow the post of, to allow the post of the attached roof structure to be. to allow the post of the attached roof structure to be one foot from the rear property line. Motion is based upon the testimony presented along with applications submitted and staff report, which constitute competent, substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that each of the criteria of article two, section ninety-four dash thirty-eight, six of the city of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations, Z L D Rs, have been met.
Excellent, uh, do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so the motion was made by, uh, member Hyman and seconded by member Wood. Um, we'll have, uh, so the voting members on this would be, um, uh, Mr. Hyman, Ms. Barlow, Mr. Wood, Mr. Camer, and me. Um, I'd like the board secretary to please call the roll. You're on mute.
Christopher Hagan.
Uh, yes.
Malaika Barlow.
Affirm.
Christopher Camer.
Yes.
Michael Hyman.
Yes.
Michael Wood.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five to zero, congratulations, Mr. Schwartz. Uh, it looks like a beautiful addition to your property, I hope you get many years of enjoyment out of it.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it, uh, I'll consider this my retirement present. And, uh, really do, thank you, seriously, I I appreciate this from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Yes, that's a lot.
Awesome. Do I leave now, or do I stay watching this?
Uh, you're welcome to stay.
You're also welcome to leave.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
If your tear ducts are working, you can be bored to tears a lot.
I could, give me a couple of minutes, so. Thank you all, all right.
Thank you. Okay, uh, that's the only case on our, uh, agenda today. Uh, there are no administrative appeals, uh, no unfinished business I'm aware of, um, so that would move us to new business. Uh, item A is our annual organizational meeting, which is normally held in October, but because there were no cases last month, um, we are now holding it here at our November board meeting. Um, we are electing officers for the upcoming year. Um, so I don't know if it makes sense for me to turn it over to staff to, um, to run that, or if I can, or I can just, um, request a nomination for, uh, board chair.
Well, I'd like to nominate you for board chair, I hope I have my colleagues' support.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to accept, um, thank you.
Thank you.
I move the nominations to be closed.
Okay.
Immediately.
Okay, uh, is there a second? With that, um, I think we'll take a vote on, um, my nomination as board chair. Um, so I'll turn that over to, um, our board secretary for the, um, for the vote.
Malaika Barlow.
Affirm.
Christopher Camer.
Yes.
Michael Hyman.
Yes.
Michael Wood.
Yes.
Okay, um, uh, when do we start counting the mail-in ballots? Isn't that gonna take a while?
Not so fast, Mr. Trump. Well, I think it's like the state of North Carolina, we get a week, I think.
Yeah.
Pretty good, they're postmarked, yes.
Yeah, well, we have until next Friday to to count them.
Okay. Um, well, now, uh, well, thank you very much, I appreciate you all placing your, um, trust and confidence in me, and I would, um, I look forward to, uh, to the upcoming year. Um, now take a motion for our vice chair of the board.
Can we ask a question first of the person who we're about to nominate?
Absolutely.
Alaga, would you, would you be willing to, uh, assume the position of, uh, vice chair?
I'm gonna pass, I'm hoping you guys are gonna volunteer. Looking for a volunteer.
It'd be a very long meeting.
Well, it wouldn't hurt to have, Christopher, maybe you should be vice chair, so you two can, you know, we'll just have to remember one name. So can I nominate Christopher, do you wanna?
You could, I was gonna nominate you, Malaika, but.
Uh, but see, I got to speak first, so, and I've got seniority, so I get to take a pass.
And I'll second her motion.
Thank you, Michael.
Uh, there's a motion and second for Mr. Camer as, uh, vice chair of the board, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any other nominations?
Move to close them immediately.
Okay, so I will, uh, move over to our board secretary to, uh, call the roll, please, on the vote for vice chair.
Christopher Hagan.
I, yes, I.
Malaika Barlow.
I affirm, yes, thank you.
Michael Hyman.
Yes.
Michael Wood.
Yes.
Okay, uh, unanimous approval for, uh, the election of Mr. Camer as the vice chair for the zoning board of appeals. Um, I believe that concludes our annual organizational meeting, is that correct?
Can I ask one question of John, or or just to see, John, are you checking in with the mayor? Are they looking for nominations for an alternate, another? Or are you guys already vetting someone?
Uh, the, I believe they are going through the pool of people who have been interested in it in the past. As a vacancy becomes available, then we go through those applications and and so forth and make that nomination, so.
So you don't need any of us to try to solicit interest to share with the mayor?
I don't believe so, I'm not aware, yeah, I'm not aware of the the absence of interest.
Okay.
But if so, we would obviously, you know, make that announcement, but I believe they are looking through, you know, potential applicants and probably within the next month or so, make that that recommendation.
Thank you.
Great.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
This means that Mr. Fields moves up to a voting member.
No, I believe, uh, Mr. Wood moved up, uh, to to be, and then Mr. Fields moved up to first alternate. And then, so the next person joining would be the second alternate, I believe.
Correct.
Okay, um, that said, that concludes, uh, the organizational meeting. Uh, I believe there's no other business, uh, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hope everyone has a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Stay well.
Thank you and be safe.
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Chris and Chris, on your nominations, and, uh, we'll be in touch.
That was great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, bye-bye.